These are educational facilities resolutions. And I will entertain a motion to accept 552 through 557. I think these have all gone through the Finance Committee.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Powell.
Seconded.
Seconded by Vice President White. Comments, questions around resolutions 552 through 557?
President Evans?
Yes. Commissioner Elliott.
In reference to Resolution 557, this just seems to me a waste of money that somehow in-house that we should have the skill set to do this. If not, then why can't we talk to RIT about giving this as in-kind service? But this is the kind of spending that really, in my mind, we are going to have to rethink in light of a, I think the superintendent said, a forty-four or fifty million dollar budget deficit. We can't afford to continue to do stuff like this. And, I mean, we've got all these people in-house who suppose, should have these skill sets, and we are contracting this out. This just seems to me, in my mind, to be a waste of funding.
Is there a question there?
No, no, this is serious. This is serious. This is, this is serious. This is, you know, talking about us as, you know, having oversight over this, just seems to me that this is a waste of money.
I know this is a specialty of RIT. Is, did you want to respond to superintendent or someone?
Absolutely. And John, if you can just piggyback on my response, this is a specialty of RIT and a specialty of our new deputy for administration. Right now, he's the only one we know of in-house that has this kind of expertise. In fact, even the city of Rochester is looking to work with us on this initiative. I believe there's some in-kind donation as well coming from the university. So, we're not paying all of it. There's quite a bit of support coming from the university as well. John, you want to add?
The RIT is contributing about an equal amount of in-kind grant money to this. They will actually pay for tunneling events. What this is buying is training for twenty of our people. It's also buying facilitation to lead four events that actually look at the process improvements in this district. You do not have anyone trained in this, in this district at this point. This is also part of an organizational effort to begin to get a culture of change in the district where people think about improving the way they do their work. We've engaged with the city, Dr. Turner over the city with Rochester by the Numbers on lean six sigma and are working with him as well. We've also engaged with some of our other contractors that employ lean six sigma for support with their black belts and green belts as well. So this is just one part of an effort that others are donating to, if you will, to get the, the district to a position where we can make those changes. I submit to you, if you don't invest the dollars here, you won't be able to recover the savings from the process improvements that are out there because people do not know how to make those improvements and make them last, or we would have done it a long time ago.
So, you're looking at spending forty-one thousand dollars, potentially the savings will be in the millions of dollars in terms of not just efficiencies, but looking at everything else you see listed here. So this is really a small amount of money in looking to really streamline the way we spend nearly seven hundred million dollars in this district. So again, this is about making what we do better. If you look, take a look at just the working transportation alone, has the potential to save us over five million dollars.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner, Commissioner, excuse me, excuse me. Sit down. Please don't, please don't stand and interrupt the, interrupt the meetings. The resolutions. Mr. Richardson? Mr. Richardson. First off, I don't think you're a city taxpayer, but that's neither here or there. Mr. Richardson, you will either take your seat or you will leave this room. Do not interrupt this meeting again. I'm asking you very nicely. Mr. Richardson, don't interrupt this meeting again. Thank you. Commissioner Williams.
Just to make sure I understand, because I'm, I'm having somewhat the same problem that Commissioner Elliott is having. My understanding of the resolution is we'll spend eighty-four thousand dollars, so forty-three thousand from RIT plus the forty-one thousand from us, and that is develop a plan to, that's to do the plan to do the pilot.
No. That is to do, that is to do training for twenty individuals in the process. That's also to do an assessment of the district. It also provides for forced facilitated lean events with RIT leading those events and between three to six of our people conducting that improvement event. Each of those events will be focused on one of our processes in the district, whether it's purchase-to-pay or, you know, some other similar process. So that, that's what this is actually paying. It's not to develop a plan.
Okay, because I'm, I'm reading from the verbatim from the, the resolution. It says, "And former plan to start a pilot program to improve work processing, safety and ergonomics, pollution prevention, lean energy and fleet management practices," on and on and on and on. So either the resolution is, is not worded correctly or...
Commissioner, Commissioner, we're talking about training twenty people. We have nearly, what, five, six thousand employees? So it really is a start in, in the process for us, as twenty individuals can begin the work of making this happen across the district. I mean, I, I submit that at times you have to spend a little bit of money to realize a lot of savings. And many of us are frustrated with the processes that we have, or lack of, of processes that exist right now in the district. When you look, take a look at our operations, there's a lot left to be desired. Transportation, we didn't look at our contracts for nearly a quarter century. When we begin to take a look at those things that we're uncovering, this is a way for us to get ahead of many of these issues. So we're looking to spend a tiny amount of money with the help of some experts to begin to really sort of button down what we do in a much better way.
And Commissioner, the, for clarity purposes, the formal plan for the hazardous abatement and the ergonomics are two of the areas that RIT brings to the table. And they will, as part of that improvement process, there will be improvement, a plan for additional improvements in ergonomics and occupational safety, so...
Is there, will there be any follow-on, follow-up cost to this, or is this, is this it? I mean, this...
This is it for this year. I will, I will look at the results between now and the end of the year and see, as the superintendent said, we should see a return on our investment here. And if we do see those return on investments, then I would propose additional training for, for next year.
But we do have capacity building in that, that bottom line. We're not looking for RIT to do this for us forever. As we build our own internal capacity, we can begin to do the training ourselves.
That's the reason we've engaged with Rochester, the city, so that we can bring this capacity inside and do the training. We just do not have that capability right now.
Thank you. Vice President White?
Yeah, I was at the Finance Committee meeting where this came up. And that, this resolution, 557 and 558, which we've already talked about, and I assume we'll talk about again, these issues came up, and these clearly have financial implications. And just to sort of, in, in attendance at that meeting, it was just myself and Commissioner Powell. Commissioner Powell, of course, has, we had a parent representative too, who has some accounting background. I do not, of course, but, but this, you know, is, is a good point to bring up, and people need to remember, these are, it's very artificial. It seems like we're talking to you, but this is supposed to be our meeting, but we have to do it in public. So I'm going to say what I would say normally in a normal meeting, which is, Commissioner Williams, given your financial background, and I, you have a lot of good questions, and a lot of these questions are coming out tonight, and they are good questions or sound questions, but this is why you should be on finance. These questions that you're asking, these, these statements that are being made by the district staff, all these statements, all these comments were being made during the finance meeting, which lasted an hour and a half. We would be so blessed if you were here at that Finance Committee, participating in that kind of question. We could get these answers in advance, and, and we could learn more. I, I will tell you, Commissioner Williams, I don't know what you know in terms of finance. That's obvious. Your background is in finance, mine is in law, you can run circles around me in this area. So I would just say, for the sake of my own development, for the good of the order, all these questions that you're asking could have been asked at finance, and I'm not saying it's wrong for you to ask them now, you have every right to ask them now, but for, for the sake of the, the development and the, and the forward progress of this institution, if you would reconsider your decision to join finance and use that expertise at an earlier point in our deliberations, it would be so helpful, not only to this board, but, but so helpful to me personally. I, I really would ask that you reconsider. And I realize you have every right to make whatever decision you want to make, but these questions on resolutions 557 and 558 only prove the point that you should be on finance.
Okay. Any other questions related to...
Yes, I'd like to respond to what...
552 through 557?
President White, I'd like to respond to what Commissioner White just said. There is an alternative. We could abolish, which I know some of us would like to, this cockamamie committee system that we have on this board that leads to exactly this, this kind of problems. And, and by the way, you know, Commissioner Williams certainly has the right to ask these questions in public, but no board member has the right to do, to collect a salary and do less than their fair share of the work, and then go out and question other people's commitment to their work. That's what I'm objecting to. And that kind of hypocrisy needs to be spotlighted, it needs to be challenged, and it hasn't been, and it's going to be.
Okay. Any, any other questions or comments around educational facilities, resolutions 552 through 557? Hearing none. I'll call the question on resolutions 552 through...
Point of order?
Yes.
Student representatives...
Oh, yes, thank you, thank you. Student rep, student reps advisory vote?
Oh, sorry. Aye, right? Aye?
Yes.
Say aye. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, student rep. And I'll do a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Williams. How do you vote on resolutions 552 through 557?
Yes, with the exception of 554, 555, and 556, I vote no.
Madam Clerk, have you captured that? Did you say 554, 555, and 556?
Yes, correct. 554, 555, and 556, my vote is no.
Okay. Commissioner Powell?
I vote yes to all.
Thank you. Vice President White?
I apologize, Mr. President. 554, yes to all, but let me just make this quick comment. This is only really, just repeats what I just said. 554 to 556, my vote was going to be to clearly vote for them and not, my comment was going to be, it's good to see resolutions that involve minority businesses. And 554 to 556 involve such resolutions. We discussed these during the Finance Committee, and now I hear Commissioner Williams say he's not voting for them. And, and, and again, it is his right, as Patrick Henry said, I would defend his right to say that. But my goodness, I would have liked to have known why you've taken that position. Am I missing something? I say that quite genuinely and sincerely. We're missing out on good deliberations if we wait until the board meeting where you raise these questions. Finance, finance is where these questions need to be raised. I, I think 554 and 556 are good resolutions, but you don't. I would have liked to have been informed as to why you don't think so. I could have learned it in finance.
Right, well, it's, it's his right to vote no.
It is, it is.
Commissioner, Commissioner Elliott?
No on 557.
Thank you. And Commissioner Brennan?
Yes.
Thank you. We will now move...
Your own vote.
Oh, and I vote aye to all.
Does it, do they care?
Yeah. We will now move to procurement and supply, resolution...
I'm sorry, 558 would come before...
Yes, thank you.
Separating out...
Yes, I was going to pull out 558 for separate discussion. So let's vote on resolution 558 first, and I'll entertain a motion for 558. So moved. It's removed, seconded.
Second.
Moved by Vice President White, seconded by Commissioner Powell. Questions or discussions around 558? I will note that we had a lengthy, from my time, I believe it was a forty-five minute, fifty-five minute discussion from when we had the transportation presentation. So any other questions, comments around resolutions 558?
Yeah, I, I just want to make it clear from my perspective that, and I, I support Commissioner Williams on this, that for a hundred and sixteen million dollars, there should be some individuals of color who are participating in this, in this process for this a hundred and sixteen million dollars. So that just speaks in my mind to the fact that we have some work to do on this board because maybe the district doesn't know how to go about this and don't know how to reach individuals of, of color in the sort of informal ways that are out there as well. So I want to be able to help to participate in bringing those kinds of resources, opportunities of where, in which we can perhaps engage more people of color in this process. That's a lot of money. And somehow, you know, in addition to what Commissioner Williams was saying, I, I think that if, particularly if we're spending this kind of money, I'd like to be able to ask this company, you know, what's your MWBE? I mean, I think we have to think about these things if we want to make sure that persons of color are participating in this, in this process, in this vendor process.
Thank you. Any other questions and comments around resolution 558?
Yes, I, I have a couple of questions, again. Going back, can you, let's have a review of the one-tier and two-tier system that you are, that's the basis of the, of the bid?
Mr. Scam?
Currently, we have a...
Currently, we have a one-tier system.
Okay.
As Jim explained, we send all the buses out in the morning. They go and run four hundred and sixty-some-odd routes, pick up kids, drop them at school. The two-tier system would send the buses out, they would pick up kids, half of the buses essentially, send those buses out, they would pick up kids and deliver them to school, and then start a second run and picking up kids and delivering to the second tier of the school.
Same, same buses?
Same buses, yes.
Okay, so, and that would...
And that's repeated then again in the afternoon on dismissal, so...
Okay. And because here you're saying, right now we have, there are about four hundred buses we have under the tier-two system. And by, under the current system...
Under the current system, one-tier...
One-tier.
...in excess of four hundred and sixty-five? Four sixty-five, I believe.
Okay, and so you're saying by going to the two-tier system, you can eliminate anywhere from twenty-five to fifty percent of the number of buses?
Yes, sir. Yes, makes sense.
Wish you're going to be paying for the five-hour rate instead of the three-hour rate because they're on the road longer, but...
Yes, same number of kids.
Still going to save money.
And the bus, and, so your saving comes, savings comes in where?
The savings comes in the unit cost for the number of buses that we would be paying for.
The difference between...
Fewer units.
Three, two, three hours.
Fewer units, right?
And one, five-hour rate.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
It's basically one-sixth of us.
It's what?
Less drivers, less buses.
Less fuel buses.
Utilizing your assets better. You've got one driver.
And that's not reflected in the one-sixteen, correct?
No.
No, it's not.
Was this the lowest bid?
Yes.
But that, here, here's a problem that I'm having is, contract comes out in bids one-sixteen. Now, in, at the beginning of the, at the inception of the, the project, you said, you know what, instead of four hundred buses, we only need two hundred. So now where, I mean, why would, why would they do that? Or, or are they saying, look, well, you know, my, my bid was based on four hundred buses, and now you're changing the rules of the game? Or, do they, do they understand that?
Yes, they do. They understood that, they were briefed on that, they understood what the plan would be. And as you all know, we cannot make this, this call without, you know, the board's approval. So we said, plan on doing exactly what we're doing now. Operationally, we're telling you, we're going to look at other ways of doing business which would reduce the number of buses, but we, that was told to all the bidders upfront.
Okay. The other, the other thing too that, that came out was the fuel. Who provides fuel? Us or the companies?
As, as in the past, the district maintains the fuel. We, we buy off the state contract and provide the fuel to, to all our providers, our own buses as well as those.
So this cost only covers what? The...
It covers the buses and, and the hourly rates for the drivers. It covers their insurance, essentially all their operational costs but fuel.
But that's the biggest component, correct? Other than labor? Or are they rolling in depreciation and other non-cash charges?
They have everything but fuel. So they provide the driver, they provide the maintenance, they provide the systems that go with that, the support, they provide expeditors.
Del liabilities as well?
Del liabilities, depreciation on the bus, all of that is the contractor, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else, Commissioner Williams?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Powell?
I'd like to suggest an answer to Commissioner Williams's question of why would they do that. Essentially, if they can redeploy their existing fleet elsewhere, they can make a buck elsewhere. I mean, they, this is a national corporation that is servicing all of the major school districts, and if they can either redeploy a bus and reduce their, reduce their fleet or use one of our buses to replace something that's going out of their inventory, then they win in, in the reduction process even as we win. It is possible to craft a contract that has a win-win-win. And the fact that some of our schools are going to be starting earlier, to me, that suggests a major programmatic educational win that we haven't been willing to talk about. But in fact, a significant portion of our, of elementary students can benefit from this.
And if I may, Commissioner, just add one thing about, about the contracts as well, and forgive, correct me if I'm wrong, but the fact is that for twenty-four years, we've not questioned, we've just been spending and just giving. Buffalo's questioned, Syracuse is questioned, everyone's questioned, but we've not done that. So these providers, honestly, in some ways, have been profiting off of our sort of, I hate to use the word, but ineptitude or not, not asking the right kinds of questions of the work. Now that we are, I think we're falling in line with what other cities are doing in New York State, so...
Okay, but, yeah, but the only, again, what I'm grappling with is, right now we're paying twenty-one million, by straight-line the, the cost, we're at twenty-three, but you're saying, now you're saying, well, no, that's not, that's not it. It can go down to nineteen, or seventeen, or fifteen, or whatever it is. And that's, that's the, that's the problem I'm having in, in terms of, you know, their, their expectation is it's going to be twenty-three million, or they're going to get a hundred and sixteen million over the next five years, and you're saying, no, it's not going to be that, it's going to be substantially less. And if I were, you know, if I were the bus company, I mean, I'd, I'd have a different take on it. I mean, because...
We're the biggest, we're the biggest show in town too, Commissioner.
Well, right, but...
If they don't want to lose our contract.
Well, yeah, but, you know, you know, looking at the reports, I was reading an article on, you know, they're having problems in Buffalo, for example, in terms of not with the, not with the buses, but with the drivers. They can't, they don't have enough drivers.
I could respond to that. That's, that's a key driver for this, is that, pardon the pun, that there is a labor constraint. And part of the issue with, with not being able to get quality drivers is the, the work hours, the, the length of day. So by offering, by going to a two-tier system, the bus drivers are driving more hours and not sitting back in the garage drinking coffee. So they like it because it's a longer work hour, they get more, more hours. So it actually alleviates a constraint that the bus company has with getting that, that labor component. I'm sure you've read about the, the problems in Buffalo. So I, I think that was a big advantage and a big factor in how they viewed it.
If I may add, in fact, during the RTS, the lawsuit we experienced last year, in fact, one of the biggest worry that we had is if we did not come out on top, or if RTS, RT did not come out on top, the yellow bus companies could not provide services for the entire district. They didn't have the capacity to do that because of drivers and equipment, so...
Because we changed their start times.
Well, if we'd lost the power to provide public transportation, RTS to high schools, and yellow picked up, they did not have the capacity to handle all our high school kids. So that, what you see in Buffalo goes back to the driver issues, this would reduce that chance, actually.
Okay.
And the fact that we did bid this competitively, and the, the teams actually, rather than lumping the bid together for an all-or-nothing bid, they split this into the individual components that were discussed, also sent the signal to the bus company that we were looking for competitive pricing, and we were looking for alternate providers if we couldn't get that competitive pricing. So I, I think that, again, brought advantage to the district in, in the ability to do that, and holding that cost down this year and in subsequent years.
And if I may too, I think originally by, by doing that, part of our goals are perhaps leverage small operations to become part of, of the show. So perhaps if we had MWBEs who had smaller operations, they could participate, but we had to go with the lowest qualified bidder.
Exactly, because it was competitive bid. So we'd be going to come to do that.
And when would you have more definitive, more definitive cost in terms of, oh, yeah, a more definitive cost than what it would be, either to go back to them or to, for our estimates, for budget estimates? If you're saying it's not going to be one hundred and sixteen million, it would be something substantially less than that?
Well, it would be built every year annually on our usage. That's, the premise is, is pay-as-you-go, essentially a usage-based system. But this year, as we do our student projections and figure out how many bus riders and to what, what schools, and do that routing, then we will know how many buses that we have to put out there, again, factoring in the load on those buses, that type of thing. So we would have a, a budget planning number that will go into this year, and then that will be updated as we go through next year. So you will have essentially one, one-fifth of that snapshot as a planning budget going into our, our budget this year, and then during the year of execution, we'll be tracking to that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions on resolution 558?
I just have one. Could we make sure that Mr. Richardson, as well as Cynthia, get a copy of the DVD, since they missed my remarks earlier?
About school choice?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't need, I don't need a DVD for that.
Right, well...
I'm not going to ruin myself.
Do not provide me a DVD for that.
Well, we, we all...
You'll get it anyway.
Well, we all get copies of the board meetings anyway. Yeah, you get one too. I stay up late watching these meetings, I enjoy the DVDs. All right, anything else on resolution 558?
For sure.
Okay. I'll do a roll call vote on resolution 558, starting with Commissioner Williams. Oh, no, our student rep is gone. She has a midterm, so she, she has a study. She probably would have been able to stay longer if the meeting ended at eight-thirty, but it, we've gone past the time. Commissioner Williams, resolution 558?
My vote is no, primarily because of the lack of WMBE participation.
Commissioner Powell?
It's marvelous that some people have the luxury of voting on principle, knowing full well that there are other people to pick up the slack. I vote yes.
Vice President White?
I vote yes, although I do share an ongoing concern. This isn't the first time it's been said that this district ought to do a better job. And I believe it's doing a better job in terms of finding chenilles there. And let me just note for the record that I know they are looking at creative ways. I got a call, an email, saying that we needed to get some professional, someone under professional contract to do some snow plowing, and they were specifically looking for minority contractors. So I know the district is trying to do a better job, and we can always improve that work product. So I, I vote yes for this, because I know the district will continue to make sure that the contractors which we sign on look for a diverse workforce to supply them the supplies that they need. So, yes, I vote yes.
Commissioner Elliott, 558?
I vote no for the reason that Commissioner Williams has exposed. Somehow, we've got to do a better job of bringing in more persons, companies of color in all of these different business arrangements, and I'm just not satisfied with that. I, I am hoping that we would do a better job, but unlike Commissioner White, I'm just, I don't have the confidence at this point.
Thank you. Commissioner Brennan?
I, I vote yes. I think that Commissioner Elliott makes a, an important point now, which is that, that the difficulty we're having with the issue that her and Commissioner Williams have addressed may very well have to do with just knowing how to go about doing it. And we need to take specific steps to, to see that we do. For too long, our efforts in this area and this district have been efforts that I could understand a lack of confidence in. And it has gotten better, but can get better still, and we have to redouble our efforts. And it's not just with contracts, it's in terms of recruiting teachers and all the way across the board.
I, I, thank you.
King James sentence, I'm sorry.
That's fine, thank you. I, I vote yes. Obviously, I look forward to continuous improvements in, in, in all of these areas, but I look forward to realizing a cost savings this year. And, and also, as I said earlier, I'm very encouraged and hope that we can have more matrons on our buses. I think the GPS and cameras are also a plus, and I hope that we encourage all of our companies that have large contracts, that they definitely work to hire as many city workers as possible.
Ms. President, I, I just want to ask, and I realize we've, we voted on this, but I had asked during the Finance Committee meeting what the protocol was to ensure that the amendment to the responsible bidder policy, which we passed about a month or so ago, that said, we have to make sure that people who do business with the district don't have any pending EEOC or human rights violations pending against, determinations pending against them. them. And I asked during Finance, and of course, I think the question caught folks off guard, and someone said they were going to give us an answer. I, I, okay, all right. We just want to make sure that board policy on the issues that everyone has addressed here is, is being enforced. And we do have a policy that says, hey, listen, if the federal government says you violated equal employment opportunity laws, then you don't do business with our district until you clarify that that's no longer the case.
My personal privilege.
Thank you. Yes, point of personal privilege.
Since we have voted on this, let me ask the question. If this had been voted down, given that it was bid out, and the lowest bidder, bidder was presented to this board, what would have happened if we voted this down?
The option would have been to continue under the current contract, the way we've done, done in the past.
So that would not have afforded minority vendors a new opportunity, even if such minority vendors existed?
If we did not bid it out, it would not have provided an opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Resolutions 559 and 560, may I have a motion to approve Resolutions 559 and 560, please?
To move.
Moved by Commissioner Powell, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Elliott. Discussion around Resolutions 559 and 560. Hearing none. All those in favor of Resolutions 559 and 560, please say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. We will now move on to Resolutions 561 through 562, which are information technology resolutions. I entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 561 and 562. So move.
Second.
Moved by Vice President White, seconded by Commissioner Powell. Discussion, questions around Resolutions 561 and 562?
Hi, on 562, I have one.
Yes, Commissioner Williams.
What, well, specifically, what is it, especially the distance learning opportunities that they talk about here?
Mr. Clibby?
Mr. Clibby, Tim C. Allen.
He's already moved.
No? Mr. Clibby.
Sorry, Commissioner, can you repeat your question, please?
Yes, what is the, what are the, the distance learning opportunities that are talked about here, especially through the Rochester area interactive telecommunications network? What?
The, the network itself is a group of interactive response, or interactive cameras in 10 of our buildings. The opportunities for distance learning are for children to do virtual field trips, mainly. Staff can do professional development as well at a distance, but we mainly use them for virtual field trips for children in, in that arena.
From, from, from point to, from point to point, or from where, where are the cameras located without, within?
They're in schools, libraries, classrooms, Raton, the Raton Room at East at Franklin, and in about, there's 10 total in the district.
We also have one in our conference room downstairs.
Wilson has one in the foreign language room.
Okay, and the field trips, they can take just at the other, the other sites, the other endpoint sites, or what?
No, no, the field, they can go back and forth to those sites, but, for example, the one at Wilson in the foreign language room, they actually have a, something set up with a group of students in France. So they communicate back and forth with the students in France.
Okay.
Thank you. Anything else on 561 and 562?
I would point out that all those questions were answered in the Finance Committee, had the member of our Finance Committee deemed to attend.
Thank you. Any other questions on Resolutions 561 through 562? Okay, all those in favor of Resolution 561 through 562, please say aye. Any opposed?
561.
One opposed to 561, the ayes have it. We will now move on to Resolution 563 through 579, also along with Resolution 507. 507 is related to us specifically as a board, and, actually, no, I'm sorry, 50, 5...
576.
What number is it? 576 is related to us as a board and our, and our, and our board staff. So I will entertain a motion to approve Resolutions 563 through 579, along with 507.
To move.
Moved by Commissioner Powell, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice President White. Discussion on Resolutions 563 through 579, along with Resolution 507?
President Evans?
Yes.
I'm going to abstain from 563. My employer is listed there.
Okay.
My vote is no for 570, and I just want to, for the record, the 575, snow plow, as it was discussed earlier. And I think that I may have mentioned this in a prior session, special session or something. You know, I know that there, there gotta be some brothers around that can snow, that can plow some snow. And so, you know, it's, it's just important to me that we, that the district really do its due diligence by including persons of color in our activities, vendor activities.
Thank you. So I just want to capture that for the record. Commissioner Elliott, if you can just repeat that for the, did you capture that, Madam Clerk?
Yeah, 570, no, that's correct.
Okay.
575, also no.
So 570 and 575, no. Vice President White?
Been a long night, yeah. Very briefly, this is, you talk about brothers out there snowing, I happen to have two clients who plow snow professionally. They have insurance, one has a major contract with a HUD in Rochester. Sinez knows this fact. I got a email from John saying, we all did, or some of us did, saying, hey, listen, we're, our plowing contractor defaulted on his contract, we need to get somebody else out there. I saw that email, and it just so happens that coincidentally, two of my clients, both of them victims of EEOC violations, are in the snow plow business. So I emailed Sinez, you talk about, I know brothers plow some snow, and they do, and they do it quite successfully. The problem was, and Sinez had actually contacted one of them even before I had contacted her, and my second client, I gave her his name, she tracked those people down, I think it was on a weekend, and we did everything possible, we, the, the district did everything possible to get those folks in the loop. But here's what happened, they weren't the lowest bidders. That's the problem. And Commissioner Williams, I'll remind you of a discussion we had probably about six, seven months ago, where I emphasized the need to, the real opportunity was not in these, these contracts, the lowest bidder contracts, but professional service contracts, where you don't have those restrictions. When I was talking about the audit firm, law firms, that's where we have the flexibility. But, but Commissioner Elliott, let me tell you, personally, I was involved in identifying those brothers who plowed snow, and the district did make an effort to get them online, and they weren't the lowest bidder. So they, they both learned something from the process, they may bid lower next time, and maybe we'll get them in next time. But there was an effort. And there are brothers, you're right, that plow snow, but they just don't make the lowest bids.
Thank you. We've had, we have Commissioner Elliott's vote. I'm going to call the vote, starting on Commissioner Williams.
I have a couple of questions.
Okay.
On 563. And I hope I'll be brief. In here, on page 49, it talks about an additional $10,000 for each community-based organization provider for maintaining and/or increasing enrollment from VEDS beds, Bed's Day, October, October 1st, 2008, to December 5th, 2008, for a period, January 23rd, 2009, to June 30th, 2009. Just want to make sure I, I understand. So if all these organizations, say they have 20 kids, as of this particular day, and then as of whatever the date they stipulate, they have 21, do they get an additional $10,000?
Yes, Robin, you want to come up? Thank you. Yes, you have to speak into the mic, because you're, you're on candid camera, and you're being recorded.
Only for the board, TV portion of this is off.
Yeah, pass the time.
Let me explain the process very briefly. The State Ed Department requires us to take a student enrollment count on the first Wednesday in October, which is called Bed's Day. And our funding for UPK, Universal Pre-K, is based on that number. However, this year, we had some struggles, because daycare subsidies were cut in the end of August, right before our big enrollment and recruitment drive, you know, as children enter. And we do sometimes have an additional opportunity provided by the state. We had it last year, and I thought perhaps we would have it again this year, and we did, to take another count at another date that's established, and they let us do that in December this year. So to give an incentive or a promotion to the agencies, particularly because they were the hardest hit with the daycare subsidy cuts, they were told that they would have an opportunity to get an additional incentive for maintaining their enrollment or increasing their enrollment. So any agency that dropped below their Bed's Day count did not receive the $10,000 incentive. We had about 70% of our community-based organizations with UPK programs that qualified for the incentive this year. I was, I was happy to see that. In addition to the $10,000, they received an additional $200 per child who was still enrolled as of December 5th, which was that other date that I established for the second count. We were able to apply for a mid-year expansion grant. It wasn't a great deal of money, but we had an additional 22 students at December 5th. And I think that was very good for us, considering the struggles that we had with those subsidy cuts. So that's an explanation of how that process worked, and, and how we did this year, and why that's in the resolution. And they won't be able to receive that money until it's approved by the board.
Okay. And the final, final question is, there are two organizations here, that they seem to be singled out in terms of getting the matching funds for transportation. Why only, why only two?
Well, that is an initiative that began last year, and it was to target family childcare homes. And these are individual homes where childcare is provided. And oftentimes, we aren't able to get those children in UPK programs, because they don't have transportation, and because sometimes family care homes have infants and children that would be old enough to go to preschool, and the people who provide the care aren't able to bring those children to the program. So there were two community-based organizations that have UPK programs that also provide childcare, but that collaborate with many other community organizations themselves, and are known to do this. And they agreed to transport those children, if funds could be provided, to their UPK program, and not to seek them as childcare candidates.
And this is a collab, collaborative between, I believe, the Community Foundation, us, the city, trying to find ways to subsidize some of these places, because we know of the need. And last year, I know, this year and a half ago, Dr. Calab made the commitment with the city and the, and the foundation, we just followed through this year as well. So it's a way for us to target specific, specific parts of our community, with knowing that the big, biggest, biggest issues around UPK is half-day in transportation.
So it's to increase our enrollment?
Yes.
Try to get more children into UPK program?
Okay.
Thank you. We, we, we're gonna, if it's okay, I'm going to call the question on these votes, I'll do a roll call vote, starting with Commissioner Williams.
Okay, and these are, sorry, resolutions?
563 through 579, along with Resolution 507.
All are yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice President White?
Yes.
We have Commissioner Elliott's, Madam Clerk, you have Commissioner Elliott's vote, thank you. Commissioner Brennan?
Yes.
I vote yes to all, and I would like you all to meet our new executive assistant to the board, I believe she's still here, Deborah Flanagan, who will be joining us, starting February 2nd. This is a preview for what you're in for, so welcome.
Take good care of you downstairs.
Thank you very much for attending. Thank you, colleagues, for your conversations. Unfinished business from previous meetings, we have none. New business, is there any new business to come before the Board of Education?
Commissioner Williams, or Commissioner Evans, thank you. Given the lateness of the hour, I will, and the, the fact I'll be meeting with the superintendent soon, I'll address my questions to him then.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, I do have some new business.
Is it brief?
It is brief.
Okay, Vice President White?
Brief. January 12th, many of you have heard much about this meeting that we had. Let me just summarize by saying, I think a door was open to a dialogue that was long overdue, that, that is, this discussion about mayoral control. We will be continuing that dialogue, I'm calling it a community dialogue, on January 28th, 2009, at Colgate Divinity School at 6 o'clock. At that meeting, we will continue our discussion, spirited though it may be, on mayoral control, and hopefully, from that meeting, have a better understanding about what is in the best interest of our students. I should say that the community dialogue will be balanced. It won't be pro-mayoral control, and it won't be anti-mayoral control. There'll be a speaker who can address the pros, there'll be a speaker who can address the cons, and then there'll be somebody in the middle. And I would encourage those to attend if you, again, want to do what is in the best interests of our children.
Thank you.
Commissioner Evans?
Yes.
I forego asking, asking the question that I was going to ask until this, this subject was brought up, anyway. And I will be very brief, I won't regale you with too long a tale of my own persecution at the, at the hands of the villainous Gannett newspaper monopoly. But I will say this, that that article, and those articles that have appeared in this paper over the course of the last several days, are the most dishonest, most inaccurate, most unbalanced pieces of garbage that I've seen from a so-called reputable newspaper in 30 years in public life, and in a considerable number of years in, in journalism. It is simply not true that that meeting on January 12th was hijacked. I spent exactly four minutes of that meeting, a meeting of some two hours and 15 minutes, discussing the issue of mayoral control, and simply asked a question, a question that the mayor has avoided answering for a good many years, a question the public has every right to have answered. And those questions were respectful, he didn't answer the questions, and his response was to belittle the citizens who came here, and quietly and respectfully picketed on behalf of their own right to vote. And that's what this is all about. I was in Washington for the inauguration of Barack Obama this week, and, you know, I've heard people at this, on this dais invoke his name in the service of some pretty dubious causes sometimes. I was the first elected official in this city, citywide elected official, to support Barack Obama, way before anyone, anyone on this dais, or who has recently left this dais. And one of the things that I saw this week that was really compelling, was I saw people who came from all over the country to witness this moment, some of them with very few resources, some of them with tears in their eyes, standing in the cold. And, and the message that I got out of that, and the thing that I remembered, was that people lost their lives within our living memory for the right to vote. The right to vote is sacred, and this community has every right to have a balanced discussion, unlike what we see in the Democrat and Chronicle, I might add, a balanced discussion of this issue. And reasonable people can disagree, but to, but to pillory individuals, elected officials or citizens, simply for asking a question, and that's all we did, took up a couple of minutes of a meeting. I spoke, as I said, for just a few minutes, two hours and 16-minute-long meeting, the mayor spoke longer than anyone else, and I apologize if I hurt his feelings for, for referring to him as a, as a windbag in a private email. I, I didn't mean to hurt his feelings. I do think that if people understood the context, which was not reported, he was speaking very derisively of minimum wage, almost minimum wage, school district employees who came here to voice their issue on mayoral control. He did it at great length, he was never held accountable for it, and my response was in response to that. You know, when I first started working for, for Obama, I got the same kind of threats I'm getting now. Don't cross the mayor, don't cross Gannett, shut up, you're jeopardizing your own designation for reelection. And I have a three-word response to those people, go to hell. You are not going to intimidate this community, you're not going to roll back their voting rights without a discussion. You will not do that. Gannett can lie, other media outlets can flack for the mayor, members of this, people on this board who lack the courage to stand firm on this issue can do that. But we will have a discussion. Makes no difference at all to me whether I'm reelected to this board. I've been a board member for 12 of the last 26 years, I don't need the line on my resume. But I'll tell you this, everything I've spent my whole life believing and working for, fighting for, is on the line on this issue. And we, this community deserves an honest discussion, and nobody, nobody is above being questioned, nobody is above being held accountable for broken campaign promises. And when I read in the paper this morning that Superintendent Bresdard was represented in this article, and I have no idea whether it's true, most of the article is not accurate, was represented as joining Commissioner Evans in apologizing for the brief raising of this issue at the meeting on January 12th, I was astounded. I don't think that's a proper role for the superintendent, it's not for him to apologize for me or any other member of this board, when we speak... It's not for him to apologize for me or any other member of this board when we speak on matters of public policy, when we address issues on the agenda of our meeting, and I hope he did not do that. Commissioner Evans has informed me that, in fact, that is not accurate, that he certainly did not apologize for anyone else on this board and anyone else's actions, and if that's the case, Gannett needs to have an ombud, an ombuds person come in and look at their handling of this story. And and if it's not the case, I just want to, want to voice my concern and simply say that the superintendent and the board president and nobody else should be apologizing for anyone on this board. I apologize for nothing. The people of this community have a right to address this issue, they have a right to have their questions answered, they have a right to be treated with the same dignity as a mayor or a school board member or anyone else when they do it. And that's, that's really the heart of my question, Superintendent Bizard, I'd like to know whether it's accurate, that you went to the mayor over the course of the past week and apologized for anybody on this board, because I don't think you have any standing to apologize for anybody but yourself if your conscience so dictates.
Commissioner Brennan, are you asking a question?
I did ask the question. Did he, is that accurate? Is the Gannett report accurate that, that, you know, Commissioner Evans, you have said it's not accurate, you told me that this afternoon.
I would, I will say the same thing I said in the emails that were, with someone decided to say.
Duffy, who cast, who cast a gathering as one of the most embarrassing meetings I've ever been involved with, it's astonishing, the man has asked a question, it's the most embarrassing meeting he's ever been involved in, and he said, he said, yes, this is the question, you don't seem to understand the question. He said he has received apologies from Evans, Bizard, Campos, and Elliott.
Right, well, let me tell you something.
Yes, for me, he did.
I understand that completely. You'll be explaining that to your constituents, soon.
As I've said, I apologize to everyone that attended that meeting, I should have adjourned the meeting, as I said, I said it in the email, and I still stand by it, period. I mean, that, that's, that's what I said, and that's what I stand by.
Now, why should you have adjourned the meeting? Why is that the case?
Because folks need to learn not to interrupt when other people are talking, to recognize it's here, but I don't want to go into this long discussion now.
Evidently, that's the problem. People don't want to go into discussions, but you're not going to avoid this discussion, and you're not going to lie about it with impunity, and neither are media outlets or public officials. It's just not going to work this time.
Right, well, well, you know, I.
You're telling me something different than what you told me three hours ago.
Look, Commissioner Brennan, what was written in the email that was leaked to the media?
Do you want the tape, Commissioner Evans?
What was written in the email, what was written in the email that that was leaked to the media, I stand by what I said, period. I should have adjourned the meeting, as I said, and next time.
People need people in, in.
I should have.
On this dais and in public office, first need to learn to start telling the truth. That's the first thing they need to do.
Okay, thank you.
Before we can, then we can deal with some of the other problems.
Right. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
To move.
Second? All in favor? We have no speakers addressing agenda items you named without a list, Mr. Richardson. We stand adjourned.
This is safety for this. Don't do this, folks. Do not do this. We've got an emergency in these high schools.
Talk to us, talk to us.